Oh. I didn't realize it was so important.
It's not.
I'd like to show that everyone is here except for the mayor, Patrick Mahoney. If we'd like to stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
To the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, a nation without doubt, the invisible, everything to dust and sprawl.
Okay, moving on, approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Now, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes of the May 16th, 2019, public hearing. Move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Approval of the minutes of the May 16th, 2019 town council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of the June 3rd, 2019 informational work session. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Zero second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the eyes have it. Moving on to petitions and communications. Is there anything for the North Beach Volunteer Fire Company? If so, Larry will take those comments. No seeing none, moving on. Deputies' report. Is there any, you have the deputies' report? Is there any comments or questions for our deputy? Greg.
Good evening.
Good evening. I was just wondering if you'd had any problems and there's anything the town hall can help you with. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Need any help with anything, anything we can do, any particular problems that you're having?
I don't think so. Yes.
Great. Thanks.
Some dude the other night ripped up, did a bunch of damage around here, but we, he knew who he is, he was actually charged, but he ripped up the light out here, so he's charged.
Have things calmed down at Farmers Market?
We basically, no. I guess that, of course, that's, we were trying to get another couple spots for deputies. There was a temp stabbing last weekend. There was an off-duty US park officer that tackled the guy with the knife before he could do anything, but, I mean, it just seems like it's kids, juveniles. The adults behave themselves over there. I mean, surprisingly, but, I mean, with the, you know, the alcohol and everything, but that, that's the kids are the problem. Usually middle school age kids are the ones that...
One more, real quick. So I know it's in the administrators' report, but I have to ask about the speed camera on Old Bayside. Is there anything new on that since you wrote the report? I'll ask either one of you, but nothing new, no projections on when we might get that back? All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Moving along, we have the Public Works report. Any questions for Mr. Berry? Greg.
Hey, Jay, good evening. I know that the town's gone through its paving, I guess that it's going to do for the season. Is that right? And I think that was the company that the town used for that. It's not one of the companies that was at the pre-bid for the next letting. Is that right?
They were there.
They were there, okay.
And they provided a bid.
Okay, great. I presume you inspected everything and they did a good job, everything looks good?
There's a few, there's a few issues we have that they worked out, two more I'm actually meeting Grant when I get back from MML to finalize it. And there's a portion of B Street due to the work that was on that contract that they didn't do. So we're going to work out like a creditor, some infield adjustments. But otherwise, 95% satisfied with them. There were some issues, there were some in Richfield Station, but they made, they made well with them. Had some citizens call me, I kind of got in the middle, but they rectified their wrongs and at the end of the day, they, they did quite a bit of work for the money.
The leak at the, there's an existing leak right now at the water park here all are trying to resolve?
We did resolve it temporarily, but we had to bypass a manifold with six distribution lines, three inch from a 12-inch down, so I had to bypass the whole thing and feed it with a lot of stuff, but it's, so it's online temporarily. When we shut down, we're going to have to go in there when the pool's dry and figure out the proper fix. And for one thing, unique this year, I found after being under that park for 12 years, the groundwater level has risen everywhere. So where we normally could kind of tunnel to and get, we couldn't keep the pumps up enough and get it out of there, so we had to cut some new access points to do certain things, but we'll get it in the off-season.
Okay, that was my only question. Thanks.
And Jay, in your report, you had mentioned that you would have your first walk-through with the bridge for closeout. I think I saw you out there Monday, actually, when I was driving by, so that's probably what you were doing, but anything to, anything to share on that effort?
Nothing too notable. Holly was with me. What I wanted at the end of the day, similar to Streetscape, the town negotiated with the state to have lights and different aspects. We wanted, you know, we wanted underground lines. So at the end of the day, I wanted to clarify ownership. The state's going to take care of X, the town's going to take care of X, and so I can plan maintenance-wise. So we preliminarily walked through that, we're going to follow up with some ASBILs and some actual documents. But otherwise, I think 95% is pretty much cleared up. I'm glad it's done.
Y'all are.
Any other questions for Jay? Moving along, we have the town engineers' report. No, the code enforcement, please. Connie? Yes.
Hi, Connie. I was just wondering what the status was of the Harborview, and that, the stairs they have on the side there, I think...
You mean Harbor, are each of my 3725 Harbor Road?
The unit, apartment units across from Abner's, and we're on the opposite side of that, they got those old stairs and...
Where due to go to court on July the 2nd?
Go to court, wow, okay. Looks like it's gotten worse, I just drove by there this evening and...
They certainly haven't done anything.
One of the corners, six-by-sixes is kicked out of it.
There's been no work completed at all.
Yeah, it's a life safety problem for sure. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions for Connie? Moving along, we have the engineers, town engineers' report. Paul's not in, but Holly will answer any questions or take it back to Paul. Does anyone have any questions? Larry?
Not a question, but just a comment to add on the last item on the water and sewer manual. We are moving forward with that. We actually have another meeting set with our little work group the week after the 4th of July, so hopefully we're pushing that forward and we'll be bringing it to the full council July, maybe? Probably at this point, more likely September, since we don't meet in August. Thank you.
The comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to bullet point that Paul's team has outreach to State Highway, encouraging them to include a right-hand turn there coming out of Richfield Station where that, the proposed light is going. And all we can do is ask. That would be ideal, we'll do the best we can. If they can't get it in there, they can't. But I do appreciate everybody's efforts in getting that in front of State Highway. Thank you.
Any other questions for the engineers' report? I just have one, and that's regarding the dredging, like my favorite topic. Just, has there been any more movement besides what's reported in here? And is there any sort of report as they talk about the, the jetties and either rising them or changing the actual structure of the jetties? Is there any reports on this?
I don't have any new information from the federal dredge, however, we are getting ready to go out to bid for the DNR Waterway Improvement Funds that we received, the grant to do the partial dredge, so that will, that will be going out next month. So we would be starting that likely in the August timeframe.
Okay, and I think I might have mentioned this at the last town council meeting regarding Callum's Marina and the piers. There's a suggestion that there's, there'd be a floating pier and the reasons why. And I think I brought up about, well, if we're doing one floating pier, why don't we do multiple floating piers if that's a better technology to use, a better engineering solution? And so I still think that's something we should potentially pursue is the use of, when possible, more floating piers.
We itemized out the floating pier, so if we make a decision to replace that from the, as a fixed pier, we could do that.
Something to just keep in mind that, you know, if we're going to do a short-term fix, it might make sense to do a longer-term fix that would account for any sort of, you know, if there, if there are better solutions, we should follow through with that. Anyone else for the town engineer?
Madam, may I make a correction to what I said a minute ago?
Of course.
I just realized I made a mistake.
I don't know what I was thinking about.
Back to the code enforcement report.
Well, we have two cases that are probably court-bound. The one that I said is July the 2nd is not the one that you asked me about, but we do have issues that the town attorney is dealing with, the attorney of the owner of 3725 Harbor Road. And I don't know why in my head at the moment, I was totally confused. I guess I'm just tired, but that's really what's going on. No, and I, as soon as I sat down, I'm like, oh my gosh, Connie, that's the wrong property, but yeah.
Is there some, is there resistance there to making the improvements? Is that what...
Well, he hasn't made any attempt to do anything. And we've been fighting this for over a year now.
He's been remarkably adept at stringing us along. So for example, one of the ways that he's done that is he says, oh, talk to my lawyer, and then we have trouble getting a hold of the lawyer, and then the lawyer says, oh, I'm not representing him anymore, talk to him directly. And I, and I go round and round with him because I can't talk to him directly if in fact he's still represented, so I have to establish that he's not represented. Then I talk to him and I say to the, to the owner, I don't want to hear what your reasons are, I just want to hear when you're going to fix it. And he's like, oh, well, I gave the town these plans and I'm waiting to hear back from them. And I'm like, no, you're not. And then I have to call Connie and I have to say, is he waiting for something from us? And Connie says, no. And then I go back to him and now all of a sudden he's represented by the lawyer again. And so it's been like that. I have drafted a contempt petition, I need to get it filed. I haven't done that because I didn't want it to get scheduled in while I'm supposed to be in MML, but as soon as I get back, I'll do that.
And this all started because we did go to court originally and, and he agreed outside before we ever got in the courtroom that they were going to follow our direction and fix the problems, and ever since then, it's been a string-along process.
Right, he agreed, we went into court, he put it on the record, hence the basis for my contempt petition. Now, I don't know that I'll actually get a contempt ruling, they're kind of hard to get, but it will send a signal that we're serious and... Have you reissued additional citations?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So do we have a court date on those?
No.
Okay, so let's check on that because...
Wait a minute, no, I, no, I reissued, no, I'm still thinking about the other project, the other problem. I reissued on that one, but I never reissued on this one because... Yeah, because we were...
Go ahead and reissue.
Okay.
At this point, we need a, we need to sort of bring all the cannons out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No problem.
That all sounds like due diligence on the town's part because there's a big risk there, so thank you.
Well, if you read, if you read in the detail notes, you'll see all of the steps that have been taken. It's amazing.
Thanks, thank you, Connie.
I'm sorry, again, I'm sorry, apologize.
Lot, lot going on.
Next, we have the water park report. Marilyn, is there anything that you would like to point out to us?
Any questions for me? We had our world's hardest swim lesson today, 221 guests. We kick off the swim lessons every year with the world, this is our ninth season, it's very exciting. You should see pictures coming out.
Any questions? I just have one comment. I'd like to thank the water park for their support of the Chesapeake Beach and Hunger Dragon Boat, specifically Josh, Bradley, Marilyn, and Philo. I'm not sure if I missed anyone that's associated with the water park, but thank you for your support, you're always there for that.
By the way, who won the mayor's?
I don't know. I have to have something to say in the lightning round.
Well, that's in my report, too.
And rightfully so, your support is really greatly appreciated. Thank you. Next, we have the water reclamation treatment plant report. And John, John, is there anything you'd like to share with us?
No, it's there in the report. We just have a lot of things coming up. I could be here for an hour.
So what I'll do is I'll turn it to questions. Are there any questions for John? Larry?
Not a question, just again, once again, I'm pleased to just point out no spills to report this month. Continued excellent job on that, thank you.
Any other questions? The town's treasurer report. Anything you'd like to share?
Not other than it's a busy time of year getting ready to close, and I don't know if there's any questions.
Any questions for Dale? I just have one. You were going to look into if there's some sort of standard for the amount that a town ought to have in the reserves, so that we could try to meet that standard or see if we're exceeding that standard. Have you had any luck, and if not, it's okay.
Yes, actually, I've done a lot of research. I'm putting a number of documents together and working on a way to summarize it, but the town council should see that information in the near future.
Great news, and thank you for doing that. Moving on, we get to the town administrators' report. Is there anything that you would like to point out?
I just wanted to point out the center railing at the front entryway is now installed.
And the young folks? Other, is there any questions for Holly on the administrators' report?
Just a question, Holly, on the permit suspended, can you give any background as to what that is or where it is?
That's related to Bayview Hills.
Okay.
On a slope. Deep slope for borings.
Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I've got just checkmarks pretty much down this whole thing and just marked "good work" next to a lot of items, so it's a good job. Thank you.
There's one other thing that might be worth a discussion, and that's the Callum's Field Hot Lot regarding some of the repairs along that area. Is there anything you'd like to share with that?
Sure. Jay and I met, it was part of our state highway final walkthrough, we met with a contractor on site, they did park some large equipment there, and we were able to mitigate them to make some repairs to some of the areas that were damaged, so they will, they will be doing that, and that's finalized.
Moving along. I'm going to introduce three ordinances. The first one is ordinance number 19-12. An ordinance of the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the adopted general fund budget for the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, to reflect unanticipated revenue from admission and amusement tax and to appropriate additional funds in the amount of $175,000 for legal services, planning and zoning services, engineering services, and property maintenance, all arising from unanticipated geological events. The public hearing will be at 6:45 at the next town council meeting. Next, ordinance 19-13. An ordinance of the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget for the water park fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, to transfer funds from savings and to appropriate said funds for certain repairs to a water park attraction and for certain unexpected legal fees. That public hearing will be set to be concurrent, or to be directly after the first one, so approximately 6:50 at the next town council meeting. Finally, ordinance 19-14. An ordinance of the town of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget for the utility fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, to pay administrative costs relating to a 2014 loan. This ordinance will have a public hearing at the next town council meeting at approximately 6:55 or directly following the previous ordinance, ordinance's public hearing. Moving along, we have reports of officers, boards, and committees, planning and zoning. There was a meeting held June 12th, 2019. Anyone from planning and zoning here? Okay, if you have any questions, please just forward them to Jeff. Board of Appeals, there was no hearing held. Chesapeake Beach Oyster Cultivation Society, Mr. Bacon.
First off, I'd like to say I think we should have Valerie conduct all the meetings.
Objection.
They go this rapid, they go this rapidly.
I object.
Seabox completed the eighth annual oyster transfer from Fishing Creek. This year, the survivability rate was only 60%. This is most likely due to excessive rainfall that we have encountered over the past nine months. Oysters don't seem to do well in freshwater, especially saltwater oysters. Now, there are freshwater oysters, but we don't raise them, okay? But 60% is 60%. If you take the oyster spat that we get in September and you put them directly on the bay, the survivability rate is between 10 and 15%. So it's a great thing to house our oysters and protect them from the predators. The Seabox Special Project for 2019 is the hosting of the Edna E. Lockwood from October 2nd to October 9th. The Edna is the last remaining of 600 bug-eye oyster boats built in the late 1800s. The bug-eye oyster boats were built before the era of the skipjacks. The Edna was completely restored by the Chesapeake Bay Maritime Museum, that's, I'm sorry, that's Bay Maritime Museum in St. Michael's. The Edna is on tour to a number of bayside towns and selected Chesapeake Beach because of our oyster education program. One-hour tours will be scheduled for many students, and public tours will be available on the weekend. This is a great family event. The Edna will then be permanently located in St. Michael's. So this is a one-time-only event. It's not going to come back, it's going to only be here this one time, and they've agreed to stay from October 2nd to October 9th. The other locations that they're already going to are two and three days, not seven. And they're doing that because we talked to them about our education program. Chesapeake Beach might consider how it can do something special during this time. I'll leave that up to you. Seabox was also contacted by the Calvert County Public Library last month. They wanted to know if we would be interested in participating in the Smithsonian-sponsored Water/ways, waves tour. Waves, waves tour, scheduled for early 2020. Seabox will be having their large display and three community murals there and our oyster cages. And they will probably go before and during and after the Smithsonian tour will be here, which is late January to early March. We will also be making available the Trail Bingo Games starting next week. Again, it's an opportunity for Chesapeake Beach to do something. Excellent publicity for Seabox and the town. And the contact, of course, is Joni Gilman at the library. This is a really unique thing, and what the library wants to do is have programs from now through January, March, and on into late next year, on into early next year, sort of building up to this Smithsonian tour, which is a huge monstrous display tour, which takes up the entire meeting rooms at the Prince Frederick Library, and then some. So we're going to be down there, and we also have offered to them a couple of days' worth of live oyster demonstrations. The Southern Maryland Agricultural Commission has just completed the new Southern Maryland Oyster Trail brochure. Southern Maryland Oyster Commission has taken over this opportunity from the Pearl Organization down at... Oh. Anyway. Down on the eastern, on the shore of St. Michael, of Patuxent. We will be getting 100 copies to have for town hall and the library, and they'll be coming next week. These are slot copies and like. What I'd like to do is to give to each of you, if you would, a copy of the brochure, which has already been posted on the website by Holly, and this is, like I say, for the Edna tour, is really a spectacular event.
Thank you very much.
Is there any questions for John and Seabox? One thing I will say with the oyster transfer, that it's a pleasure to see the number of volunteers that come out, the number of kids that come out to transport those oysters. It's really nice to see, and the efforts and work of Public Works is recognized also with what they do. It's quite an operation that you got there going, and it's a pleasure to be a part of it.
Well, I can say again and again and again, without the Public Works Department, Seabox would have to fold, because we do not have the horsepower or the mechanical power to make these oysters into the bay, into the creek, and then into the bay.
The economic development, Larry?
Several things. One is, in conjunction with our friends in North Beach, we hosted a film team from a Cleveland TV station that came here to tour the both towns, the twin beaches. I saw the first episode of it, which was the North Beach, and the Chesapeake Beach Park should be coming up, I think, early next week, and I'll work with Holly to make sure it gets posted on the website when we get it. But they toured around, saw a lot of things, and the idea is to share that with people in Cleveland and hopefully when they take... And hopefully, when they take the road trips, they'll consider coming down this way. Second item is tomorrow morning, we're hosting what's called the Beaches Business Walk. This is put on by the Calvert County Economic Development Advisory Commission, which I'm a member. The idea is to bring a number of the commission members into the twin beaches. We'll be visiting various businesses in both towns, with the idea being to discuss with them how Calvert County Economic Development can help these businesses be more successful, what resources we can provide, and how we can help them to continue to flourish. Third, don't need to remind you, fireworks July 3rd. And the last item on my head was, we were supposed to have our Moonlight Cruise last Saturday. This was going to feature Dr. Rolf Eschleman, who was going to give a presentation on steamboats and their influence on developing up and down the bay, particularly, obviously, the Twin Beaches area. The skipper, very understandably, canceled the cruise early Saturday morning. I checked the forecast myself, and indeed, there were small craft warnings up that day. As I sat on my deck Saturday night, I couldn't help but think what a beautiful night it would have been for a cruise because it turned out to be absolutely beautiful. But skipper made the right call at the time. So it is rescheduled for Saturday, August 3rd. Dr. Eschleman has already confirmed that he will be there. So if you're interested, please contact Town Hall. There's tickets available. My co-chair, Greg, anything to add?
Yeah, I would like to mention to everybody that the next work session, there's a resolution on the table, that it's regarding small cell aesthetics. And I wanted to thank Larry and Holly and Derek and Lissa and our colleagues in North Beach worked together on that. Thank you very much for that. And the second item I wanted to mention was the quilt square has been installed at the Railway Museum. Y'all are familiar with the quilt square trail here in the county. I think they're up to 10 or a dozen now, which was about their magical threshold to actually print the map and the brochure for the trail. And it looks fantastic. If you get a chance, you should go by the Railway Museum and take a look at that. Thank you.
Any questions for the Economic Development Committee? In non-moving along, we have the Twin Beaches Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition, Keith.
Yeah, thank you. So we haven't had a meeting since our last town council meeting. But I do have some information to report. And first, a few just news items. I have the weekly overdose report from the Calvert County Sheriff's Office in my hand, and I just wanted to give you all an update if you haven't seen that. So so far, there's been 48 non-fatal opioid-related overdoses in the county and 14 fatal. When they, when you break it out by zip code area, Lusby has the highest with 16, and Chesapeake Beach is second with 13. Now, the good news about Chesapeake Beach zip code area, there haven't been any fatal overdoses in this area. So that's great news, I think, knock on wood. And the other thing I wanted to just be sure folks knew was that Calvert County filed a lawsuit against the opioid makers and distributors just this past week on June 13th. So again, I think that's wonderful news. Hopefully, they'll be able to get some funding into the county to help combat this crisis from that. And then, more locally, we have been, our committee has been working with setting up an outreach and opioid abuse awareness event with St. Anthony's Catholic Church that's scheduled to take place July 27th, 28th in collaboration with the Calvert County Health Department and the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse. So that'd be the first time we've been able to partnership with one of the local churches. We hope to do more of that. And we also continue to work on an event with the Twin Beach Players Youth Troop. We're kind of shooting for October for that, if we can get everything to align. And they're working on a play about the opioid crisis that we're wanting to bring to the towns. And with that, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions for Keith?
I just have one comment, and that is, I remember being at one of your events, and there was something on Huntington, West Virginia, I think it was. And just to bring to your attention that, I think it was this past weekend on 60 Minutes, they had an update on Huntington, West Virginia. So I don't know if it's something that you might want to, like, get a video of, but they had an interesting solution to the problem of what, how they're approaching it. And it's basically a social worker that comes in and tries to be on the streets. But I just thought, as a follow-up to what you did last year, that it might be something worthwhile to look at. Walkable Community Advisory Group, Derek.
All right, thank you. Been a busy month for our group. Since our last meeting, the RFP has closed, and we've had pre-bid meetings. We've had interviews and other evaluations. A couple of our members and I were able to take part in interviewing the four candidates on June 12th. Then earlier this week, the full group met to review all the candidates. And in the interviews, the feedback from the interviews that we did, appreciate Holly and Chris being part of that as well. And I can say, I mean, we'll be considering this here in a few minutes. But I can say that the full Walkable Community Advisory Group endorses the selection that's being recommended later here in a few minutes. So we just look forward to moving forward and getting the next step, moving on that work that we've been working so hard for, for a year now, right, Jan? So we're looking forward to that. So if there's any, anyone has any questions for me on that before we consider, I'm happy to take them otherwise. Again, I think we fully endorse that selections.
Any questions for Derek? Okay, moving along, there's no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. And I just want to make a, just a quick notice on these new business items and also on the ordinances. A lot more discussion on these ordinances that are being introduced. And on these items right here under new business are discussed at the work session. And those are always available to listen to. And so it might seem at times like we just zip along through this. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we have full discussions during those work sessions. And it's really valuable, if you're interested, to listen to those. All right, new business. Councils to consider awarding a contract to Beltway Paving for general paving in the amount of $323,357, with $249,000 from the fiscal year 19 Highway User Revenue Funds, and $74,357 from the Sidewalk Capital Improvements Budget Line item.
To approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion? How do you vote? Say aye?
Aye.
And you know? It's approved. Second item. Councils to consider awarding a contract to RK and K in the amount of $67,859.86 for the sidewalk design as budgeted in the fiscal year 19 Sidewalk Capital Improvements Budget Line item. Motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Any discussion? Seeing none? How do you vote?
Aye.
And you know? Continuing on. Councils to consider awarding a contract to State Construction Corp. in the amount of $45,000 for Callum's Field Drainage Maintenance as budgeted from the fiscal year 19 Capital Improvements Budget Line item. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Comment?
Discussion?
Yeah, I just had a comment for the gallery about this during the work session. Jay had a great explanation and did really good work on, as he does on everything. But he had a great explanation of why that work was needed and why they selected that particular contractor. And I don't, I just appreciate having Jay around. It's great. Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Moving along, this is our time for public comment. If you'd like to step to the microphone and give your name and address, please feel free to make a public comment on any issue that you like.
My name is Corey Wells. I reside at 401528th Street. Good evening, and thank you, council, for your service. The Maryland Public Information Act guarantees the public's right to information about government activities, which is critical to a democratic government. Maryland's Public Information Act grants the people of the state a broad right of access to public records while protecting legitimate governmental interests and the privacy rights of individual citizens. I'm preparing to submit two Public Information Act requests to the town clerk, who is the designated official records custodian of the town according to the state and town records. The first request is for all information in any format received by, created by, used by, modified by, or relied upon by the town code enforcement officer relating to their engagement with residents or landowners whose property abuts or is adjacent to the alley between 27th Street and 28th Street, east of C Street, for the period of January 1, 2019, to the present day. This request for information includes details, including names and addresses of persons complaining to the town code enforcement officer, including any and all elected town officials. The second request is for all information in any format received by, created by, used by, modified by, or relied upon by the town code enforcement officer relating to policies, instruction, directives, procedures, guidelines, and standards used in the performance of their official duties for the period of January 1, 2015, to the present day. This request for information includes details on how the town code enforcement officer, one, prioritizes enforcement actions; two, receives instruction on executing enforcement actions; and three, exercises discretion on enforcement issues and cases. As background, I'm concerned about any improper influence by one or more elected town officials over town public servants and other town resources in serving an elected official's personal interests. On a separate topic, I've enjoyed exceptional service by the town's public work staff over the years from emergency shut-off service due to a water leak, assisting with troubleshooting of sewer backup, and investigating possible water leaks. Their service has been professional and courteous, and I appreciate it. To the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to have a public comment? Just come on up to the mic and give your name and your address. Seeing none, we'll move on to the Council of Lightning round, and we'll start with Larry.
One, we are off to the Maryland Menace League Conference starting Saturday over in Ocean City. So we'll all get to learn a lot of stuff over there, and we'll hopefully be able to put that to use when we return. And the only other thing I have is happy first day of summer tomorrow. And the only downside of that that I personally see is the days will now start to get shorter. So that always depresses me. Thank you.
Greg?
I had something prepared I was going to talk about. And it was specifically, it was about the ruling today on peace cross, how it affects all of us. But I want to talk about the fireworks and the selection of the date. There was a letter sent into the editor, I believe it was the recorder, a month or two back, by one of our town residents who felt that the selection of the firework date was improperly derived at and that the businesses ought to be consulted in coming up with that date. And I wanted to inform that individual who's here tonight, my, our friend, that the businesses were specifically consulted. I think he's left. But the, this is all on recording, though, and it was specifically at the urging from the mayor. So I didn't feel it was appropriate to send in a letter to the editor and try to offset any of that. I just want everybody to know, and y'all that come to these meetings know how open Pat has been about a lot of this stuff. And he specifically asked me and Larry to come to the businesses and ask them what they felt was the most appropriate date. I mean, collectively, not just the businesses, but this entire body, and anybody who's been part of this decision concurred with the consensus of the businesses in selecting that specific date. So thank you, Joe Johnson.
I'd like to thank Dr. Ken Rasmussen for another great presentation this past Saturday as part of the Bayfront Park Nature Walk and Talks that we've been doing. His presentation was the coastal geology of Calvert Cliffs and the Bayfront Park Beach. We had a full complement of attendees, including Councilman Morris and his wife. And from the feedback I've received, it was a great success. So again, thank you, Dr. Rasmussen, and of course, the town for helping to organize and support this. And one last thing. Ken, when we were out in the bay looking around, he pulled this up, and this is a piece of oyster shell, but it's a fossil, and it's 17 million years old. So the oysters have been here for a long time, and I just thought it'd be appropriate if... 17 million-year-old oyster shell.
That was an excellent program, Keith. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Derek?
All right, well, I too want to discuss the fireworks event on July 3rd. The different spin on it, though, because July 3rd is a workday for many people, and it's also, of course, the summertime. So there's going to be a lot of traffic, not just because of the event, but just because of the daily activities. And it really puts even an additional strain on our law enforcement. So we've got two of them here tonight. I want to, I know you guys are always on top of that event. You know, we've had some history to the South, and they had some safety issues that you guys have corrected over the years, and it's been that way ever since. So you guys have a tough gig that night, and you guys do a great job. And I know you will again this year, and just looking forward to a safe and happy event. And the rest of my time, I'm going to give back to the Met Vice President because you're going to say something that I would want to say as well, but I'm going to let, give it to you.
Oh, no, you can go ahead.
Because you own it. You're our captain. You own it.
All right, and finally, I'll take that. And just to go like this. A sincere thank you to all those that provided funds towards the $2,000 registration fee. We actually raised 2,200. And a special thank you to all those that paddled and supported us. Thank you very much. It's really appreciated. Move to adjourn.
Back home again.
So moved.
On David?
Aye.